At Tom's place.
So that you can grab it, too?
I was going to. You put it in between and whoever got it, just snag it first. Okay. Commissioner Sakovic, can you hear us on Zoom land?
I can, yes.
Oh, fantastic, okay. We are going to start then, welcome this afternoon to our Board of County Commission meeting. We have all three commissioners here, well, we have all three commissioners in attendance at this meeting with Commissioner Sakovic on the phone. And we welcome you here. As always, we start with a prayer, a reading or a thought and the pledge of allegiance. And we look at the audience to see if there is any in the audience who would like to participate with us and either give a prayer, reading or a thought, or lead us in a pledge of allegiance. So there are any volunteers? Lots of people here, any volunteers, that's always the question. Seeing none. Okay, it looks like it's coming up to us.
Which would you like to do?
I'll do the prayer.
Okay.
Our Heavenly Father, we are grateful, Father, to be able to assemble here peaceably and to work on the issues of the county. We're thankful, Father, for the opportunities to go forward and we pray for us as we do so and all in this county. We pray as we are working through pandemics and water issues and other issues that we're dealing with. We pray that we will be able to be guided, that we will make decisions appropriately. We're thankful for those who secure our freedoms through their fight, through fighting or through areas in which they strive to protect. We're thankful, Father, and we recognize that there are many throughout the world that don't have what we have. We recognize the beautiful blessings we have of this area and the great people that live here. We pray always for thy help in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Please stand and if you feel inclined to repeat the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Dallin Doole, are you here?
I am.
Come on up. He is a new employee of the month. I'm going to read this and thank you, thank you for being here. How'd they get you here? I'm always curious how they got you here, did they just tell you straight out or?
No.
I could tell by the look you shot back there that he was hoodwinked.
Yeah?
Yeah.
So what happened?
They told me that I had a meeting with PJ.
Oh, okay. And they just happened to come down here because the meeting was down here with PJ?
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. All right, here's the letter, says I would like to nominate Dallin Doole. Am I pronouncing your last name correct?
Yeah.
For Employee of the Month. Dallin is the go-to guy down at the Utah County Jail. He knows that building inside and out. If anyone needs something done, they come to him for it. Dallin is great to help with any task that is thrown his way without any complaints ever. He gets the job done in a timely manner and tries to keep everyone happy. Dallin has worked for Utah County for over 15 years. Dallin is also in charge of the camera systems throughout Utah County. He is always adjusting the focusing and focusing the cameras that that way everyone who has access to the camera system can see what is going on. Dallin is very professional in his daily tasks and makes sure that whenever he is working on is done right. The jail is a daily maintenance building with something new breaking every day to fix and Dallin knows how to fix it. He is very knowledgeable with all the equipment and generators, air handlers, boilers, pumps, toilets, sinks, urinals, kitchen equipment, computers, chillers, commercial washer and dryers, ice machines, doors and locks, doors and locks at the jail and much more. He also does the maintenance on the jail industry's building, Utah County Fire Building and many more buildings down in the area of Utah County. Dallin works great with everyone and gets along with everyone. Anyone who knows Dallin speaks very highly of him. This is why we, this is why he would be best, the best candidate for Employee of the Month. So congratulations, this was written by Nick Lance. You know him?
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I'm sure you did.
I think you just ratted Nick out.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah.
Well, you know, somebody signed it or did, actually it wasn't signed, it was printed, so I, close enough, right? Well done.
All right.
Do you want to say something?
No.
Talk about, talk about, you know, I mean, talk about some.
Okay, let's go down there and take a picture. Do we have anyone to take a picture? Ezra's gone, Lisa's gone, Brian's gone.
Go on to take a picture.
Yeah, right now, how do I look? Yeah, you stay on.
There we go.
Thank you.
The whole crowd.
Make sure and have that meeting afterwards with PJ. All right. As you notice on our agenda, it says consent agenda, the consent agenda is a placeholder for us. We will attempt to fill that with items that all three commissioners agree to. And by agreeing to it, we'll go down through the process to see if any of the, any one commissioner wants to hold an item for consideration. If we don't hold it, that means that we have agreed to it as stated in our agenda and it will go on the consent agenda. So let's start with items one through 10. Are there any items there that we need to hold?
We strike item number 10?
Yes, I have that down there. I have a strike for item number 10. If that's okay with the commission? It was requested.
Good with that.
Okay. Could we table item number eight?
I would like to do that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then I think we're all familiar with what's going on item number nine. Okay, so table eight and strike on item 10. Okay, how about items now 11 through through 17? We could hold. Oh, there's, so we need to take action on 12. And we need to change the time.
Correct.
On 12 from three to two.
Commissioner Lee, I've got it.
Go ahead, are you talking about item number 12?
Actually, on the agenda, I got an update, I want to make sure I'm following the same number. I've got number 17 as noxious weeds on mine, but another one said it was number 18, I just want to make sure I got them all.
Yeah, 17 is that, that one that you referenced.
The noxious weed, okay, so then I've got the right agenda, all right, want to make sure I got that.
So number 12, if we could, we don't need to, well, we need to take action, right? Do you want us to take some formal action on that Dave or just as stated?
Or you could just indicate that it's going to consent with a 2:00 PM date, 2:00 PM time on that date specified in the agenda item?
Yeah. Any objections to that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll leave that on consent though, we will change the time from, as it's written there, 3:00, 3:00 PM, we'll change that to 2:00.
Yeah.
That gets consistent with the one. And then item number 17, we'll hold that one.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Okay, and then on, on the closed meetings then, the only one that, the only one that we will need will be item number 18 and we can, we can strike 19, 20 and 21, leave it on consent to strike and leave it on consent that we've approved instead of date, time and location for a closed meeting to discuss the character professional competence or physical and mental health of an individual and individuals at today's date at this location. That's agreeable, too.
Agreeable. That works.
All right, Alice.
Okay, I have that we're tabling item number eight. We've stricken item number 10. Let me make sure I've got 12 right, it's approved on consent with the change of the time to 2:00 PM.
Yes.
Correct, okay. And then we're holding number 17 and then we'll be holding the closed meeting number 18 and striking 19, 20 and 21.
That's all I have.
I concur.
That's what I had as well.
Okay, very good. Wow, so that one's tabled, so we are all the way to item number 17. So item number 17 is to deny or approve an ordinance to amend the following sections, 14 dot 12 dot C dot 9. This one was continued, we've had some discussion on this for some time. Greg?
Yeah, I'm Greg Robinson, Community Development. I am happy to answer any questions. It was continued to review some of the information. I hope that we provided you enough information through the other, through the week to answer any of those questions. If you have any others, I can attempt to answer and we also have Public Works here to answer those as well.
Yeah, thank you for a lot of analysis on this. I was reading down through it, kind of staff report plus follow-up from the attorney's office, you know, on a lot of different discussion back and forth with it. I don't have any questions right now, any of the other commissioners have questions on it?
I asked Richard if he could give us an outline on his thoughts about this proposal.
Okay.
Richard Nelson, Public Works. Yeah, and I've talked briefly with each of you a little bit on this. One of the things that we've looked at from the, where the weeds function as part of the Public Works Department, we feel like there's ways to help the landowners find a way to accomplish what we need to do to be within the weed ordinance without using chemical sprays on their property. There are other alternatives for them to utilize that. We're happy to go out and meet with the individual landowners on it. One of the things that we'd look at if we, if we were to change this ordinance and not have the weed certifications, it can have a detrimental effect on the neighboring agricultural uses, especially those that are further down the irrigation ditch. The, you know, in some of the areas we have flood irrigation, so if you have a weed infestation upstream from you, those seeds get in the ditch and go on down and create a problem on someone else's property as well and get into production issues on the agriculture. So other questions that you have for me, I'd be happy to try to answer.
So some of the simple things that can be done, and we just kind of articulate maybe some of the simple things can be done specifically to Mr. Stevens' property that would, that would make it so that the certification can be had.
Yeah, that probably the simplest for Mr. Stevens, I believe there's some of the fields that are, that have some weed issues that are not planted. Those would be a really easy one to go in and take a disc to it and root those up and that would take care of the majority of the problem. Others could be as simple as mowing. They could bring in some livestock, you know, goats or sheep, something like that that would help eat those weeds and take care of them that way. There's several different methods that could be used besides the chemical application to do that, so.
And you guys have somebody that would be willing to go down to his property and show him that?
Yep, we'd have one of our weed specialists go out there and take a look at it with them, offer that.
Okay.
Was there anything else in the proposed changes that would limit what you just described, Richard?
In the proposed changes?
Yes.
I don't think so, I think it was basically taking the weed certification away was, that was my understanding, so.
I think it was more of a, not necessarily take it away, but just to make it as, not as stringent as it's been currently perceived to be.
And I guess I'm not sure on that, that my understanding from what, the way I read it, and I could be wrong, that basically would mean that if you're doing a subdivision, you would not have to go through the weed certification process. And there are things that are set forth in state law that we're trying to follow with our weed ordinance and the weed program that we run here in the county, so we're trying to stay within those guidelines as well.
I had to leave immediately after last week's county commission meeting and went to Virginia, I'm still here, and I've not been able to finish reviewing the proposed updates. And so I'm a little bit of a handicap. What are the other two commissioners' insights on this current version?
Well, I think, I think it might be advantageous to listen to Mr. Stevens, I know he's on the line. He wanted to make some comments, at least that's what I was told, I don't see him on there, but he must be on there. And then I wouldn't mind making a comment after, after that. Yes.
Then go ahead, let's, if it's all right with you, let's invite Mr. Stevens to provide his insights on these proposed changes.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Oh, good, you can hear me, okay. Okay, well, I would like to request that Brian Boakes submit a document I've worked on all week. It's entitled Forty Five Roadblocks for Subdivision Approval in Unincorporated Utah County. And then I request that I can read some excerpts from that so you understand this in perspective. To answer some of the things which have already been said, according to the Utah State Noxious Weed Act, we are already completely in compliance because we cleared, sloped, laser leveled and dished every one of our parcels. On some of them, we replanted with the seed mix. Because of the drought, unfortunately, that grass died and weeds took over. Now, you need to understand what weeds are. And so weeds, for example, produce, each plant is capable of producing thousands of seeds and may stay in the soil for years. I've been in frequent contact now with the Utah State Extension Service and their solutions all require herbicides. And these are tucks to herbicides. So to say that there are solutions, you know, there are no solutions right now. The only high-tech solutions which is on its way is there's a corporation in England that's working on a robot which will go roam your property and electrically zap every weed it identifies. I've been in contact with our rancher Ted Allen who rents our property. He, he heard hundreds of livestock, he went there this morning and looked at it and said that, that he will cut and bale the grass and feed it to his livestock because it's hard to find anything else right now with almost everything dead. He thinks they'll eat it, but we went and did all this excavation work in December and again in April and this is September and weeds fully occupy the land. So to ask somebody to go and comply with the Noxious Weed Act is just kind of hypocritical. It means that every year that we have to go and disc and till, you know, and replant our property and then hope that it rains enough in these dry farming locations to get a crop that would go and squash out any weeds which appear. You know, and so we spend thousands of dollars every year and do this while the surrounding lands all around us are all full of weeds, you know, and they're going to seed and the county's not doing anything about that. In fact, our roadway is 56 feet wide which we dedicated to the county and 32 feet of that, if I remember right, is owned by the county and noxious weeds and weeds of all types are growing there and they do nothing about that. And neither is the state, which is on Central and South who runs that road and that land isn't being controlled for noxious weeds or any kind of weeds. And so it's, it's like the war of drugs in the US. You can spend lots of money, you can spend all sorts of regulations, but you're never going to win this war. And to say, well, you should win this war before you ever get a chance to go and settle your own property, I can't think of anything more hypocritical than that. We ask you to to eliminate the regulations, it's not needed, it's already mandated under the Utah Noxious Weed Act. And we need to free us of regulatory bondage so we can get past this issue. After the other 45 issues that we've had to encounter with your, you know, with the county, with the state, with the UDOT, so we can eventually get onto our property. Just on a sad note, this is our daughter's birthday. She's 12 years old. For the last 17 years, we've been trying to get onto our property. She has no memory of ever living in a home that we owned. And so this is your chance to go, you know, and protect private property rights and give us, and eliminate the regulation and give us a chance to get past this roadblock so we can eventually get onto our property and give her a childhood home. If you have anything you want to ask me, please do. If you have anything you want to ask me, please do.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Robert. Did you want to say anything, or?
Yeah, you know, I think that Mr. Stevens raises some great points. I myself have lived on county land before and seen some of the issues there cause discontent for those of us that have lived on county land and owned property on county land. And I think that moving forward and looking at that, I think that all three of us commissioners are more than willing to take a good look at our zoning laws and at our requirements and make sure that we are being as accommodating as possible. When it comes to a few things like this, we are bound by state law. We, as a county, derive our authority from the state. We are a political subdivision of the state, and we are therefore beholden to state law. And state law does require there be some sort of a requirement. I'm very happy with what I heard from our Public Works Department, that they are willing to come out, to work with you, to find ways to reduce the burden on the homeowner as much as possible. I think right now, we are beholden to state law, so we have to have some requirement. We, I think that until we move forward and see if we can lessen some of these burdens, the least we can do is work with homeowners and find a way to make things happen and reduce the burden as much as possible. So, where I absolutely see where Mr. Stevens is coming from, and I've lived it myself, unfortunately, that is not a decision that we, as commissioners, can unilaterally make considering that our county is a political subdivision of the state. But I appreciate the efforts of our Public Works Department, being willing to come down and work with you and show you what we can do. It sounds like if you have a rancher who's willing to mow and gather that up, let's schedule an inspection for right after he does that, and you're going to be fine. So, if you already have someone who's willing to mow that property for you, let's find out when he's going to mow it, and then work with our Public Works Department, and we will coordinate so that we can do our inspection right after he's mowed it, and you'll pass, and we'll be fine. And then, moving forward in the long run, I really appreciate you bringing up these points. I look forward to reading your document of, you know, the 45 ways that it's burdensome, and I want to work to reduce those burdens as much as I possibly can within my power.
Yeah, thank you.
If I may say something?
Yes, we'll give you a chance in a second. And so, I know that a lot of times, these come up with an application. Usually, somebody's going through a certain process, building subdivision approval, and they run into what they consider a roadblock or something that they can't overcome readily. And so, this came up with that roadblock in place, perceived roadblock in place. And I recognize that it's troubling, it's a hurdle that's there. Unfortunately, what we have on our agenda right here is to approve or deny an ordinance. And that's what we can vote on, is to approve or deny an ordinance. And so, this is long-reaching, it's county-reaching, it has implications that are, I think, like Commissioner Sakovic and Commissioner Gardner said, you know, that they're far-reaching. And so, we need to, there's a lot more deliberate process that probably needs to follow this kind of conversation right now. And so, what I hear, though, and in talking with Public Works, is maybe an opportunity, and the opportunity is because we have it till the end of the month. I think the inspection processes can go to the end of the month, and then you have to wait another year, you know, get into the next, well, not another year, but you have to wait till the next season to do it. And so, it would seem advantageous to me, Mr. Roberts, that if the commission was to order, order's kind of a strong word, but I think that the Public Works would probably be all right with it, if we were to order that Public Works works with you on specifically this issue for you in finding a way to alleviate this, either through mowing or cutting of those weeds, you know, at this time, you know, to get past it now, then we don't have to necessarily go through this exercise where I don't know if any of us are feeling completely comfortable. And I think that's where we're at, is that it's not, we're not comfortable just saying, "Oh, let's just scrap it" without a more in-depth understanding. And that's how I'd see it. So, I would ask, if I can ask you a question, Mr. Stevens, if the commission was to go ahead and order that the Public Works works with you in the next 20 days or whatever it is, you know, to get this in a reasonable way, to get this taken care of with these weeds, so that you can go through that subdivision approval process, is that something that you would be, you know, in favor of?
Yes, of course. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, yes, of course, I'd be interested in that. I'm not sure if my points were really understood, though. And so, this regulation is beyond what the state requires. The state, as far as I know, does not have a regulation that will tie obedience or compliance to the Utah Noxious Weed Act to new subdivisions. The Utah Noxious Weed Act is binding upon all citizens, whether you live in the county or in the city. If you have even one Noxious Weed Act, excuse me, if you have one noxious weed on your property, no matter how small your property is, you are in violation and you can be leaned and fined. This regulation that we're discussing says that you must get noxious weed certification before you can get subdivision approval. And my argument is that is very, very difficult for a developer who doesn't live on the land. And so, to say, "Well, you know, we'll send Public Works out there and just go mow your property." Well, you know, just to clarify again, our property looked barren after we finished tens of thousands of dollars of excavation work. We went and cleared, sloped, laser leveled, and disced. Public Works went out to the property, and they saw some weed starts on some parcels that we had also planted a seed mix. And so, you know, we could spend thousands of dollars, again, to go and disced, but not living on the property, it's hard to get, you know, along the roads, near the fences, along the irrigation ditches, you know, and then on the boundaries where the county has required us to make elevated berms, so no water will flow from one parcel to the next. And so, you know, to us, not actually living on our property and not even living in the state right now, we don't really see how we can go and be 100% noxious weed-free. And to just go mow it, you know, and to bale it, they're still going to see weeds on the property, just as they do with all the neighboring properties, and to go and make us go and comply to some regulation that our neighbors are not having to go and comply with, I think is just unfair and unjust. And so, I still request that you eliminate it for not only us, but for all the people around us who are trying to get subdivision approval, so we can all go get on our land and then work to go and beautify it and get rid of the weeds and so forth.
Right. And I think, you know, we have to kind of take these sometimes in steps, and here's an opportunity for a step, is to get past this first phase, if you want to call it that. And that is, since you brought this forward and you have a concern with it, we do have a window that will be closing, and so, it's important to hit that window now. And these other further discussions can continue. And I haven't seen, I haven't seen your, you know, the 45 blocks as well, blocks to subdivision approval. If Brian's got them, I'm sure I can get them from him and look at those. But we can continue this discussion and see, you know, where that comes out. And I think that all three commissioners would mind doing that. But again, and the word, you know, we say order, the order comes from the Civil Division. They're asked, that's a pretty strong word, but it's one that the commissions can, you know, can use, request, order, whatever the case may be. But an order, then, I think gives you the highest degree of confidence that Public Works will be working with you, you know, on it. And they're shaking their heads, so I think that they're fine with that. If that's amenable to you, we can at least move past this and maybe have a longer discussion to where a lot of us can feel a little bit more comfortable on actually what we're trying to accomplish.
I agree.
Right. When I read the updated ordinance, I thought there could be some additional language added, such as optionals would include herbicides, burning, cattle, mowing, a variety of methods, not necessarily restricting to one. And that seems to be an element that Mr. Stevens has brought out a few times in the past. And I wonder if that and maybe some other language adjustments might help this and future concerns.
Yeah, and I'm not sure. I think those are in there. But anyway, I think those are all options that...
Yeah.
Commissioner Rob Moore, County Attorney's Office. I think what Commissioner Sakovic is referring to is our county code. He did ask me for a copy of the county code related to noxious weeds and a weed control board. I think the language he's referring to adding to that is in that county code, not necessarily what the weed certification of our land use ordinance. If I'm wrong, Commissioner Sakovic, please correct me, but that's, I believe that's what you're referring to, the county code section that I provided to you.
Yes, yes. I just want to make sure that this kind of, this apparent misunderstanding, we can prevent that in the future.
Yeah, and that is not before you today. A land use ordinance is, and I think you're right, we can have those further discussions if modifications are necessary. Let me also reference the statutory section that Commissioner Gardner mentioned, and that is 4-17-109, no, excuse me, 112, 4-17-112, which requires the county to develop, implement, and pursue an effective program for the control and containment of noxious weeds under land under your jurisdiction. And this is part of that plan, the development of this plan. We can have further discussions about that, but we have to have, we're required to have plans to control noxious weeds, and this certification is part of that requirement.
And I think that, I think from what I understand from the other commissioners, we're more than willing to look at that as a holistic plan, and let's discuss that and see what makes sense moving forward, while also simultaneously solving Mr. Stevens' issue by working with Public Works. I think we're very open to that, so, thank you.
Yeah, if I read the ordinance correctly, it talks about a two-year certification. So, after it's cleaned up, if there are starts to begin again within that two-year, would that not allow that certification still to be whole?
Bryce Armstrong.
In other words, if...
Sorry, Commissioner. Bryce Armstrong, Community Development Staff. What you're referring to is when a person comes for the subdivision process, they've got a bunch of documentation they have to provide, one of which is this noxious weed certification. That certification is good for two years, so they can get the rest of their documentation done with their subdivision, and they don't have to worry about that lapsing for two years. Once they get their subdivision approval, this is just a snapshot in time, that they're certified at that point as they transition from generally an agricultural use to a more residential use, that they were free of noxious weeds. Going forward, they're still subject to whatever the county code would require, the state code requires, and there's other mechanisms to enforce that. But as far as the subdivision ordinance, we just look at that one point of time to get them through their approval, and then the land use ordinance doesn't address them going forward.
So, it looks like, then, if we can work to get the certification, Mr. Stevens, before the end of the month, then he has two years while we can look at this process.
Yeah, that certification's good for two years, then he's got to meet other requirements of the land use ordinance for subdivision, and we can look at different options. There is an option to, after September 30th, to bond if a person can't get that certification done within that growing season window. We do have, it's not like it's eliminated, they still have to, they could post a bond and still get their subdivision approved in December or whatever, if everything else was done, so.
So, one question, I know this is before us right now, but if we were to refer something back to the planning commission to look at this in a more in-depth basis, would that be easier for us to do it on a cleaner slate than to do it in conjunction with this?
I think the place to look at this is in the county code, where we have the actual details of the noxious weed requirements. The land use ordinance, all it says is you just got to have the certification. And then, to get that certification, you've got to go through the, you know, the weed process, which is, I think, housed in the county code and through the weed board. And so, that wouldn't involve the land use ordinance going through the planning commission, that would just be strictly coming back to you.
So, it would be cleaner for us to just put it on the agenda and do that request?
Yeah.
Instead of doing it like right now with a formal, with a request?
I think the request would be to take a look at the Utah county code relative to noxious weeds.
Okay.
Okay.
So, am I hearing that correctly, that part of this item should be that we request the county address, the current county code to reflect?
Yeah, those are, I think those are separate items.
I think that we need to put that on a future agenda, and just to make that cleaner, and it would just be a request, but either one of us, any of us could put it on the agenda for a request back, referring it back to the county planning commission to look at that.
The other board you may want to get involved is the weed control board, who's tasked under state law to assist in this matter. So, that might be some, a board that you might want to have.
Oh, you're saying so the planning commission and the weed board?
Well, see, the planning commission only deals with land use ordinance, and so, not the county code. So, we may want to just work with the weed control board in this case. Well, let's talk afterwards, and we'll make sure that happens.
So, how would they be involved, then? What's the involvement?
The weed board would make the recommendation to us.
Yeah, the weed board is involved because the state law requires them to be involved in, you know, controlling noxious weeds. And so, that would be helpful, I think, if you had kind of their input.
Sure.
They're experts, essentially, on weed control. And so, that board is made up of certain individuals who have some expertise in doing so. And that's, I think that would be helpful, to have that as we work through any potential changes to the county code.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
And they don't meet till early January next?
They could call a special meeting.
Yeah, we could work with that.
You wouldn't have to wait till that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, yeah. We know how special meetings are called, so.
Okay.
Okay, that'd be great. Good.
More deliberation, or do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to go with the recommendation, and that is to deny this ordinance. And I will say with that, that this is not the end of this discussion. Obviously, we will look at this moving forward. We are encouraging Public Works to work with Mr. Stevens and get through this roadblock with him. In the meantime, we, I think we will work with the noxious weed board and with county code, so that we can try to make this as seamless as possible for the future.
And I can second that motion. Just have the Public Works work directly with Mr. Stevens and have this resolved before this month is out. Evidently, he has applied several times in the past in working to get it certified. If it's ever been certified and failed because weeds popped up within the two years, that's a concern. I don't know if that's ever happened, but I can second the motion as stated.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
Just clarification.
Clarification.
On the direction given to Public Works, are you looking for us to go out and do the work, or to just work with Mr. Stevens for him to do the work?
Work with Mr. Stevens.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Richard.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Does this note that Mr. Stevens wants to? Okay, let's put him on.
Okay, thank you. According to 417, I'm not sure if you've heard that. According to 417-109 of the Utah Noxious Weed Act, on B, it says, "Methods of prevention or control may include definite systems of tillage, cropping, use of chemicals, and use of livestock." We have done tillage, you know, and so, that land... We have done tillage, you know, and so that land was all cleared. And so, if you send out Public Works again, we'll just have to spend thousands of dollars more to get it tilled all over again. If that's what you want us to do, then we'll spend the money. But you have to understand, the control of noxious weeds is weed-dependent. Some herbicides work in the spring, some don't work until the fall, you know, some work in the summer, and so it's weed-dependent. You have to look at every single weed, and then you have to, you like have to determine what herbicide will be effective or win. And then you've got to find someone, you know, who has these sprayers, and someone who's available who can go and spray that. And so, this isn't at all an issue of are noxious weeds bad? Of course they are. And do you have to go and comply with the state laws? Yes, you do. All this is about is, should you make your law more specific by not including tillage, and then require anybody who is seeking subdivision approval to get a Noxious Weed certification before they actually live on their own property? And so, that's really what this is about. And I think if you ask the Utah State Extension Service, or the Board for Noxious Weeds and so forth, all you're going to hear is that we have to go comply with state law, and noxious weeds are bad, and there are herbicides, and so forth. But that's really not the issue here, and so I hope that's clear. And I hope it's also clear that, according to Utah state law, we have complied because we sloped and laser leveled and disced. And so, if anyone wants to stand up and challenge that, please do. And, you know, I'll send lots of pictures and the bills and so forth that we spent. I think altogether, on those, on the 40 acres, we spent in excess of $100,000 in all that.
When was that done?
It was done between December and April.
Of this year?
Uh-huh.
Commissioner Lee, if there's evidence that it has been done, shall we not approve his certification? Have Richard go out there and verify that land that has been done, and not have him delay any longer?
Well, I mean, it's interesting that that's, I mean, that's done. Usually, I would assume that it's a snapshot in time, when you file the application, you have from that time you file the application till, you know, and that's the snapshot they're getting, because I don't know how you can, you can go how far back. So if, back to the first of the year is okay, how about the end of last year? I just don't know when that's at. I mean, applications usually have parameters on them to say, between here and here is when you, when you do that. I mean, we all know that weeds are going to come up, I mean, that's, everyone knows that, they're going to pop up. So I'm just wondering how far you go with that? If the application, I mean, it almost seems like the filing for the application and that, you know, should have been done right away, as soon as you have that.
When was the filing done, again?
Beginning of the year? Or I guess he says...
No, it was done in April.
So it was done this past April?
Yeah.
So he has two years?
Well, if you get the certification done, you have two years.
Right.
So if he went through all that work this past winter and spring, there should be evidence of that, of course weeds will start to grow again, but the certification should hold valid.
Go ahead, Greg.
Greg Robinson, Community Development, again. It's not necessarily that he didn't disc. If he would have disced and then had the inspection done right after, he would have passed. That's correct. However, he disced and then let the weeds grow, and then had the inspection done when they found the weeds. And that's the only issue there, is if he would have disced and then had the inspector out there the next day, then there wouldn't have been any evidence of weeds, and he would have passed.
How responsive are weeds with the inspector out there?
Typically, within a couple weeks, usually soon.
And wouldn't there be evidence that he did this in the last few months?
Well, again, it's when they call for the inspection that that inspection happens. I mean, we can probably take pictures, like Commissioner Lee was talking about, you can take pictures back to five years ago and show that there are no weeds, but it's when the inspector goes out there, they need to verify that there are no weeds at the time that they do the inspection.
Well, weeds will come up within days after being tilled, and especially after rainfall, if you know far between they are, occur now. But if there's evidence of controlling the weed, weeds will always come back, no matter what we do.
That's correct.
But if there's evidence that he has done the work, should that not suffice, despite new growth of weeds?
Well, based on the way that we do our inspections, it would not, because he would need to do the inspection. I mean, most developers do their planning to coincide with those inspections that needs to be done. It's the same thing with the house, you don't call for an inspection after the house is built for the four-way, or the foundation inspection, you have to do it when the foundation has been poured. So it's one of those things that inspections happen when they're ready for that inspection, and when the property is ready to meet that qualification. I understand what you're saying.
Of course.
But again, it's when we go out and inspect, that needs to meet that qualification.
Right, I kind of feel like you're rolling the dice here. Like, if I hire somebody to come disc my property, oftentimes, you're going to get a range. They can do it between the 10th and the 20th, right? And then I'm going to ask for an inspection, and I'm going to roll those dice again, and it's like, well, I asked for the inspection, well, if, what if the person comes out on the 10th, and we don't do the inspection until the 30th, and now we've gone almost three weeks, and it's rained twice in that time? Right? The person did the work, but they've got a range from when they've hired a contractor to come disc for them, and we've got a range for when we're inspecting. I mean, if we're going to say, well, if you've disced it, then we can do it, well, then we need to be out there within 48 hours.
And if they will let us know prior to, you know, as they're setting up their time with their contractor to disc it, if they will get in touch with our people at that point, say, okay, our people can be out here between the 10th and the 14th. We can have it set up so that it's literally a phone call for us, we can have somebody out there same day.
Okay.
On that type of situation. If they're spraying, if they're using chemical applications, then typically, we would want to see it a week or two later, so we can see that the chemicals are starting to take effect. So it kind of depends on what method they're going to use, as to how to do it, but the main thing there is the communication with our weed supervisor and those inspectors, so they can say, okay, here's what we're planning on doing, we're looking at tilling the ground, we're looking on these dates.
Right.
And then we can have people out there generally, you know, obviously, we'd be looking at workdays, not over the weekend, things like that, but we can...
Does our application process explain that at all?
Probably not.
I know this is two different topics. We're looking to deny or approve a change to the ordinance, and we're also looking at to get Mr. Stevens' land certified. How do we handle the second aspect of this? If there is evidence that he did till, did control the land, those, like, getting back to us as to when to inspect?
It's very difficult to go back and say, well, it was weed-free in March, but when we did the inspection in June, it wasn't. That gets a little hairy for us. What we're looking at is, we can work with Mr. Stevens and with his tenant on the ground. If they're, they've already talked about going in and harvesting some of the crop that's on there. If we can be in there right behind when they mow that field off, that can probably take care of the majority of it right there. If there's areas that still need to be disc, because of areas that are not in production or things of that nature, again, if he can say, okay, we're going to do this between the 15th and the 17th, and we can work with him on the timeframe to be out there and do that. What we'll do is, we'll have our weed supervisor and Mr. Tanner, the Associate Public Works Director, will contact Mr. Stevens, make some arrangements on how to do that inspection and things of that nature, and then we'll work with him on getting that taken care of.
Right, I think that sounds good. And I think in this process, we've identified several things that we could maybe update in our application process, that can help us avoid this in the future. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second to deny the application with an understanding that Public Works is going to be working with the applicant to work with him to get his certification. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
That passes 3-0. All right. Now we are down to public comment. Are there any public comment? I don't see, I'm looking here in the room, is there any online? Okay, we'll move into our closed meetings. Thank you.